I'd like to welcome everyone here in the council chambers and for those watching remotely to this regularly scheduled council meeting for the Delray Oaks City Council.
Councilmember Uli. Councilmember Halleck. Councilmember Rex, Steph Ronan. Councilmember Shirley. Mayor Donaldson.
Here, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Sands. Oh my God. You are here. For the sake of the reasons that each was. God, all grace and all power, all strength, all wisdom, yours. We share that with all of us this evening. If this is leading. Thank you. All right, the next item is public comments. General public comment must deal with matters subject to the Bureau of City and the Council that are none upon the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. And no action will be taken on matters brought up under this item and all comments will be rendered staff. Are there any public comments? At least I'm all.
I would like to reiterate my concerns about the proposed MPE Pattness Recycling Project. At the October twenty twenty two council meeting, our listen best city manager Burton shared how this project was a positive way to increase revenue and declared there would be no ramifications from the proposed project. And MPE was described as being a good neighbor to our community. Yet no one mentioned that twenty twenty MPE agreed to pay fifty thousand dollars to legal fees for illegal asphalt dumping near their current order of site and their unfair business practices. In addition, they had to pay additional thousands in fees to underground water program and apply for permit from this California Cultural Commission to clean up their illegal activity. Of course, there was no admission of wrongdoing by MPE. They merely described this as good business practice. I appeared before you in February and expressed my concerns regarding the proposal to move MPE plant to DRO. I expressed my concerns about the health and safety issues for the plant and associated activities. The proposed location of MPE plant was chosen to protect the fish from the nearby ponds and to protect the protected plants. Yet there was no express concerns for the protection and health of DRO residents. I shared the potential negatives that outweigh the positives such as DRO residents and the watershed exposed toxins from recycling plant known to contain asbestos and other deadly toxins. DRO known as New Hazmat Dumping Site on the Monterey Peninsula. DRO property values plummet as DRO city officials seek financial revenue at residents' expense and ex health. I urge you to collaborate with entities affected by the relocation of the MPE plant set to Scampsey, Ramwood, the family of DRO and Christian Case to ensure all potential entities are aware of the discussions about moving this plant and to ensure full transparency over potential issues that could affect our community and other residents on the Monterey Peninsula. Lastly, as this is an important and crucial decision that has long-term consequences, I implore you to be prudent, cautious, transparent as you look at the potential impacts to the constituents that you serve. Please don't keep and focus further attention on the full and transparent disclosure of MPE project and toxic waste recycled materials, practices and regulations of their operation and prior business practices. And please clarify who is responsible for oversight of the operations and cleanup after the short term progress. That's it on my statement. I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman Shirley for replying to my concerns here today. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'm here to add my voice to the vision of the city for further prevention of relocation. Nineteen eighty seven, my office street. In Delray Oaks, I hate to say you and thought to what kind of city it was. Or I'm calling great. I consider what kind of city Delray Oaks was. And John Delray Oaks because it was primarily done for single family, this one for youth with a moderate amount of commercial building and no industrial on it. I couldn't tell me sound city or use a better name if I wanted to know. Property community. Tonight in the period, the city is about to open the gate to allow you, if not outright encouraging, ensuring this one. I understand the proposal received favorable counsel potential ask for October because it's been presumed potentially to produce revenue. I took a look at the October presentation and proposal for both reimbursement agreement, which discusses only the reimbursement for cost of environment impact studies required for the project. It does not address potential revenue to the city. They only will allow the city to explore an opportunity to partner with MPE. We don't know what kind of revenue maybe generated. More important, we do not know and not predict for its continued negative impact the presence of this land use will have on future development. I would expect that anyone preparing for funding or designing projects for the quarter of property would do the due diligence and visit the site, taking note of the existing land uses, taking note of how existing permitted uses will impact the financial appeal of their own projects. I think concrete crushing will be the priority. I don't believe that it'll be silent. And I don't believe that it will add prior quality. Or if I have that item one P of the agreement states, MPE and all users and understand that the agreement in no way obligated city to approve any environmental arguments for the project or any entitlements whether discretionary or ministerial. The city and its elected and appointed officials retain sole discretion by the group or denying any of the environmental arguments prepared for connection with open process. There's probably any future entitlements with to the project. I encourage you when this comes up not to approve this project. I think it will be a very detrimental use of our financial and environmental work. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Drew, where I do well. I just want to make you aware that Steve worked before that on the streets and I have been asked about it continually by my neighbors. So I'm looking at the ordinance since it looks like that all the travel trailers that you live in, mobile ones or the kind of stuff that gets clearly raised up. It doesn't reach a utility trailers, as in anything, some of that used for the street. I've been told that people like me, we don't put in that blue collar, people living in the neighborhood because a green property goes here. There's the exact words. I fly my flag and so forth and this is really hard. Also parking on the streets, I've been told that I can't find it in the ordinance is that you have to move it by before you else. If that's true, I'll make sure I do that. The last thing is I'm pretty sure. So if your neighbor consistently had their trees in your neighborhood, in your yard, I think I have the legal right to trim those down, especially if I ask the neighbors continually to get rid of their own shrubs. So those are the things that I'm concerned about. I just wanna, I'm very fortunate. Anybody who comes to work. But. Just getting tired of the backstabbing, the place and the whole deal. So I'm trimming, parking in the street and trailers, we determine if the utility trailer is allowed, the boat trailer, then we want to. They talk just like S H I T. If it is better to take it down, that is the one.
There's an organization in the very US or the American Bridge Association. And they play bridge. And you would like, you know, I told Mayor once before, and I would like if you can announce this somewhere or other. Yeah, people can join this organization and if it's just down the road from us, then there's a lady online who's willing to come and teach everybody how to play bridge. So I would like to give my name and my phone number to the council so they can be used. You can call me and we can organize. She can either come here or we can go to the organization, which is where the best forum I can throw. And we can look and figure out how to play bridges. It's one of the most important games for the. Old folks like me, that it keeps our brain sharp. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. Karen Harris, I live on Rosita Road, but I'm here tonight representing the sustainability of the city. This comment is in reference to the monitor in terms of notice of intent for a proposed statement recycling facilities required by Super. If this facility is supposed to be located on our property, formerly the four doors. The four doors. The public comments review are due in two days on the twentieth and we'll be soon able to follow them. At time. But after reviewing the initial study mitigated declaration report prepared by the STRO as a few concerns regarding the sustainability of the project with regard to short and long term public health and environmental consequences. The report states there are probable health concerns due to concrete dust. The dust would be generated from the crushing of concrete into powder for reuse. The proposed mitigation is to conduct monitoring and to spray air and soil with water to reduce dispersion. According to OSHA, the hardened dry concrete is a hazard this material is composed of cement, rocks, which are custom of silica, calcium oxide, and the work is silica. The release of silica into the air is a major health concern. It is a carcinogen, causes lung cancer and causes silica, silica coisis, which is a terrible lung disease that begins the lungs. There we go. C M X, M S D S for hardened concrete states that inhaling large quantities of this dust requires immediate medical attention. Do not breathe it, adjust the spray, the mist, or the fumes. Release of the hardened chemical concrete material into the environment of wide environment must be avoided. Any material that escapes the spill containment into drains and surface waters or the groundwater needs to, you need to contact the local state and federal laws and regulations for cleanup and or reporting requirements. So we have to follow all of those requirements. So this is not a small thing. It seems doubtful that spreading mist of water can prevent the hazardous material from escaping offsite. Initially, the existing facility is moving from the arena because it doesn't want the noise and dust from the operations to impact the housing project. Well, we want to do a housing project too. So would this be a contrast or contradictory to our proposed housing element requirements? Where each the hundred acres approved for housing by the Escuela, the four door environmental services cooperation agreement, the remediation program that approved the land. Will this proposed facility be located on the personal zone for future housing or on land unsuitable for housing due to having excluded ordinance? A diagram indicating this relationship would be helpful. For more importantly, where other house with less hazardous project proposals receive with the surplus land act of location, the public should know, or we would like to know, and we would not know where it is. And we haven't seen anything in the closed session for negotiations or discussions. The serious nature of the project jeopardizes the health of our community and our environment. The proposed mitigations are not acceptable for the risks associated with this hazardous operation. The future sustainability of our property, our income potential, the environment, and most importantly, our public health does that stay. Thank you.
London, it's on the fields. I'm going to go to the seat. Thank you. I've been away for a few months on that basis. So this is, most of this is very new to me. But I've been reading through, we have state. Sections that say fifty four twenty twenty, fifty four twenty twenty one, that open spaces are crucial. To society, crucial to towns and so to residents. So why are we thinking in the space that can be used for recreation and benefits of everybody to crush concrete things? When we know the hazards and the health difficulties, surely they're not so hard at money that we don't care about that live here. We can breathe this and die and get cancer. And we're talking of filling open spaces and that would be an ask to keep these open to make it a healthier place to live. We're not discussed when I check back the seventeen acres either. You know, I mean, are we going to do that some parts? We're going to negotiate with the parts to keep that open to make it a healthy place for us, but then we're going to put a concrete smashing plant in. I mean, it just doesn't, it's like we've gone backward in time a little bit away. It's like something's taken over. Nothing's on the agenda about the seventeen acres. My understanding is on that alone, we're coming to the end of the time for negotiations on that. But we've talked to the parts. And I believe we are, because I spoke to the parts to ask them a question and they informed me of that. But we're at the next meeting of the, of the City Council. Are we going to discuss what we're doing? Who we're negotiating with and we're talking to, what our plans are for the seventy acres? Have we considered leasing land for thirty years? It gives us an income all the time like other states do, Hawaii, London. I mean, it's the forestry industry stuff in Yosemite places where these, the line technically by. Having, you don't own the land, it's on a rent, whatever name we want to put on it. But we're not talking about putting pollution in here. And I came here worrying about seventy acres, now I think I should emigrate. And I hope it's on the next meeting for everybody's comments about my sentence. It's always the problem. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? That's something I wanted to say. I believe that is not a protocol. And then I've got some, I didn't write a book, sorry. Hi everybody. Couple of things. And actually, these ladies helped me very helpful, government, gentleman. Anyway, just simple stuff. I didn't think that I'm up there in a speech, but I was hoping that we could get it twenty five miles at a time in the base of the way. He's like, you know, great. Great. Anyway. Now, I'm gonna say a one twenty five mile an hour side goes to the other women group she could go over about thirteen thirty. It's a wire from down the street, like it's a freeway. Then he's gone. And so I guess we're getting a column, public safety. Is great. And I mean, I have to say, I mean, there's little kids on the neighborhood, ain't that funny? Why, yeah, that I mean, for that seven eight. Police department, solid guys, heavy hitters. They show right off, runs right up here and then for a while, one time. Anyway, I don't know if this is probably. I had some neighbor eat, they definitely pretended to some. We have chickens that attract rats, that attract black ones, that kill birds, rabbits, that threaten my little dogs, but I can't run out. So it became a feeding front, simply generally helping with the plant, but not very this to do it. That needs to be immediate. Now also. Like some photographs, the mayor has some. He said. He has photographs, he said, he showed to his people. Oh, the. Code violations, I know we don't have a code, right? I think I, we don't have a code, officer, but the twelve and fraction thirty could be addressed. Now. The new photographs are to think that. That's built against my tenants, that's my tenants and secluded. And it's all become really bad because it really, I realize that. The guilty party always tries to divide the great players for the good, but it just happens. Bring it up. Took me ten years to decode what we're supposed to. The other people dictate how I live, what I'm looking at. Many times, it's going to be old. That's, so I'm pretty confused, but anyway. I'm opening it for that later, if I get some time to try to figure it out, right? It makes sense. They're still a little bit long, very confusing. You know, community development, pretty well, a lot with that. And, you know, of course, and a couple of things about, you know, saying. And so, and hopefully guys manage the city. Get rid of the chickens. They're not for eggs. They're pretty lovely. Nineties. Not down there. What happened, some of the dust. So now the pigs, they're the thing hiding. They're like, for fiberglass group, fiberglass group, porch thing wasn't, okay? One foot loud building behind. Your Karen, the lot you told me they applied with, and that the house was, then I said we built a twenty foot metal bill. All of the teams are bringing up with the pressure, everyone's property value in the city. I'm right next to it. I'm on, I'm sorry, sir, I do limited three minutes, true, very much. Okay, let's basically say the speed limit's on it. The notice, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Marvin. More. Would I? You did a really good job, putting us down. Could you put one phone in here for that for them? You know, to travel, it doesn't matter, it will be. So Kim would have been closer because the new model would be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hey, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Our next item, we have two proclamation. The first one is a proclamation honoring National Public Works Week. I'll go ahead and read that. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, these and services that are vital. Of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Delray Oaks. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals like Ron Fucci and Sherman Low, who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of the government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders and children in Delray Oaks to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works program in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty three March sixty third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American and Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, that therefore I Scott Donaldson, Mayor of Delray Oaks, can hereby designate the week of twenty one through twenty seven, twenty twenty three as National Public Works Week. And I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. Sign, Scott Donaldson, Mayor. So with that, I'll send it to the council if you have any, any commitments you would like to make. I'll start at the end with, I'm thinking we're moving.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really like, just appreciate Ron, which he and Mr. Low for all their hard work in the city. I know we're, we have a very strong staff, but we are running closely for the things. Thank you.
Any comments? Yes, I'll just back up John and say thanks to Ron. He doesn't tackle this stuff out there with a real shoestring staff and he just gets it done. And I see him every morning when I head out to work at seven fifteen, seven thirty. But he's already here getting ready to be at the table. So he's, he's out there doing it and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank Ron as well. I see you as well almost every morning too. So thanks for your work and there's always, you know, there's nothing that I see around the city that I think, oh, why don't you get on that? Because you, you've already done it. So thank you very much, Sherman. Thank you for your work as well.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Low and Mr. Fucci. You are certainly the brains and wrong range of quality of life that we enjoy here in the city to, for a bit, I'm telling you, who's doing. But you know, Mr. Low, like your work is done primarily behind the scenes, but you know, we all just get to reap the benefits of it. Mr. Fuji executes that planning and you know, like everyone, we all see it out there every day. I see you on that trap during the part, it's on this one scene. And at least those spirit and positive about what the work that you're doing here for us and your responsive members of the community whenever he stops you, not any concerns. And you know, you're just a one man army covering this town by the time he gets one end of it, you know, something to do, I'll get rid of this, keep going. Some help, like very little. A lot on your shoulders and thanks to Ron will be for us.
I'll send it out to the public. Are there any public comments? Sorry, in the proclamation. That's one of our people, guys, rather.
City government. People think about the city. I would like to remind people that public works is public, they. Think about what you're working. Just have that work, think about what they're doing to make that work. Turn on the faucet, but hold on to make it that way. That's the public works, but also keeping your roads safe because our peritresponder can't hit it to the crossroads of the state capacity. So it's critical work to go on, you know? And I'd be remiss, Ron, I bet you know that a commander of Bushman just takes one.
And I'd be, uh, with this front, I bet you know, the commander of Bushman just takes one. To, uh, make sure that I send his best wishes. And thanks for, I mean, at least a part of the.
Okay, our next proclamation is a recognition for Pride Month. Whereas the city of Delray Oaks is a welcoming community and exceptional place to live, work, play, and raise a family. And whereas Delray Oaks has a diverse, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning community. And is committed to supporting the vitality, dignity, and equity for all of its residents. And whereas many of the residents and business owners within the city of Delray Oaks who contribute to the enrichment of our city. Are part of the LGBTQ plus community. And whereas Delray Oaks is strengthened by the diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents and business community members. All of which contribute to the character, talent, economy, and leadership of our city. And whereas while critical steps have been made towards full LGBTQ plus equity and equality. Members of our national, state, and local community still face discrimination, exclusion, and prejudice simply for being who they are. And for whom they love. And whereas discrimination against people from the LGBTQ plus community around the world make it imperative for city like Delray Oaks. To stand up and show support for our LGBTQ plus residents. And whereas we respect and celebrate the richness and variety of cultures. Values, traditions, and uniqueness as they contribute to the tapestry of our community. And whereas each of us can and should promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, support all fellow community members. Prevent the spread of misinformation and reject hate and bias in all forms, which will make Delray Oaks a stronger and healthier community. And whereas June was chosen as National Pride Month. To commemorate the nineteen sixty-nine protests and demonstrations in response to the raids at the Stonewall Inn in New York's Greenwich Village. And whereas June has become symbolic, this a symbolic month in which the LGBTQ plus community and its allies. Come together in various celebrations of pride. Now therefore, being resolved that I Scott Donaldson, Mayor of Delray Oaks, can hereby proclaim the month of June. As LGBTQ plus Pride Month. And encourage all residents to actively promote, support, and build a culture of inclusive, inclusiveness, and acceptance. Signed this twenty-third day of May, twenty twenty-three, Scott Donaldson, Mayor. Okay. Councilmember, who?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as a member of the LGBT community, I'm bringing the voice of the LGBT group. You can see up here. Delray Oaks, and we actually have a letter for you, uh, Mr. Mayor. If I, if I would read it loudly so everyone can really, like, uh. Uh, hear and listen what our response would be in this proclamation. Thank you, Mayor Scott Donaldson. As members of the LGBTQ community in Delray Oaks. We write this letter with immense joy and gratitude. We express our heartfelt appreciation for your remarkable proclamation regarding the Pride Month. Your gesture of support and inclusion has touched our hearts and uplifted our spirits in words that cannot convey. Your recognition of Pride Month goes far beyond a simple proclamation. Your proclamation serves as a powerful testament to your commitment to justice, equality, and human rights for all residents of Delray Oaks. By openly acknowledging Pride Month. You have extended a hand of solidarity. Creating a safe space for LGBTQ individuals within our city. By publicly acknowledging our presence. Contributions and struggles, you have not only bestowed us upon a sense of belonging. But also reaffirmed our shared values as a city. And we are setting a precedent, a precedent that encourages others to accept and embrace their own unique identities. Free from judgment and or fear. For many of us, this proclamation is a lifeline. A reminder that we are not alone. That our voices matter and that we are allies in the position of influence and power. Your proclamation serves as a beacon of hope, guiding us towards a future where diversity is celebrated. And love knows no bounds. Through your words, you have emboldened us to stand tall. Embrace our true selves and continue advocating for a more inclusive society. You have given voice to our dreams, amplifying our collective call for understanding, empathy, and justice. The impact of your proclamation extends far beyond our community. Reaching individuals who may still be struggling with their own identities or facing prejudice and discrimination. Your unwavering support sends a resounding message of compassion. Inspiring others to reevaluate their biases, challenge societal norms. And foster an environment of love and acceptance. Mayor Donaldson, your leadership exemplifies the deep, straight spirit of allyship and compassion. By taking this meaningful step towards recognizing the LGBTQ plus community. You have shown that our voices matter, that our stories are worth sharing. And that our rights and dignity must be protected. Your actions have set a powerful example for leaders across the nation. Reminding them of the transformative power they possess to make a positive difference. We, the LGBTQ community in Delray Oaks, are honored to have you as our mayor. A leader who not only champions diversity, but embraces it. Your unwavering dedication to creating a city where everyone feels seen, heard, and valued sets an inspiring model for all the communities and leaders to follow. On behalf of the whole LGBTQ community, we extend our deepest gratitude for your unwavering support, compassion, and recognition. Your proclamation serves as a guiding light, reminding us that together we can create a society. Where every individual is celebrated for their authentic selves. May your proclamation inspire us all to continue striving for a world where love, respect, and equality flourish. May it embolden us to engage in meaningful dialogue, foster understanding, and build bridges of acceptance. We are immensely grateful to have a leader like you, Mayor Donaldson. Who stands with us on this remarkable journey towards a more inclusive future. With our sincere appreciation, the LGBTQ community in Delray Oaks. Thank you.
Yeah, just to kind of back up John's statement, as a parent of, uh, alternate lifestyle, uh, children, um, I appreciate the support the city shows. Um, and the unity that it brings to us. That's why I was like, yeah. Yeah, that was like, I got to consider in the LGBTQ plus community and the support that City Show can offer before. Thank you, brother.
Vice Member, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, same. Uh, thank you, Mayor Donaldson, for your proclamation. It's super meaningful. I too, um, am a mother of some people on this, uh, plus community. And so, um, hearing those words are very. Um, Don, thank you for your words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, round one, love.
Right, um, I'll take it out to the public. If there are any public comments regarding the proclamation, feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none. Um, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to have pulled? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public who would like to pull any items off the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve, to move?
On second.
There we have the second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. No one opposed? Take the motion, pal.
For mayor, yeah, and I have a comment or a comment. Uh, thank you so much, uh, for this, uh, to be. All the members of the city council and also distinguished members of our Delray Oaks community. Uh, in regards to the Pride Flag Display agenda item that was just presently approved, uh, by the council this time. It is my great pleasure and intense joy to invite you all to the Delray Oaks Flag Display Event in the first Thursday. Uh, at four p.m. here, outsiders, city hall. Uh, the event is not just about one specific group, uh, but about celebrating the vibrant industry of individuals. We call Delray Oaks their home. Uh, it is about acknowledging and honoring the unique identity and experience that we need as who we are as the parents. This is a celebration of us, the diverse residents of Delray Oaks. It is an open invitation to every single member of our community, regardless of your personal beliefs. Please join us and, and be happy. Now, we promise you, uh, we don't bite. Uh, at the event, we already have confirmed attendance, uh, from our honorary co-entitoria. Uh, from the office of the Assembly Member, Don Addis. Also from the office of Senator John Laird. Uh, as, as well from the office of U.S. Congressman Jimmy Pineda. And of course, we are so thankful and honored that we're gonna have Sheriff Ina Nieto to be our guest speaker, uh, at our event. So, uh, and following the solemn ceremony, uh, outside the city hall, uh, we're gonna walk with pride, uh, all the way to Old Town Hall. Uh, for the reception. Uh, so in there, we will have food, entertainment, performances, and fellowship. So as you can see, uh, our Pride, Pride Flag event will be exciting and fun. So, uh, I expect that I'll see everyone here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll move on to new business item number seven. First item there is item eight, consider appointments to fill administrative hearing officer vacancies. What we're trying to do there is fill two of the three vacancies that we have. And we received two applications, uh, for, uh, for administrative, uh, hearing officers who had served before. Um, we've got, uh, Paul Peterlin is one of the applicants and friends of De Jones. Like I said, they've been in those positions before and I support them moving forward. Um, if there's any discussion, um, we can discuss it. Otherwise, I'll accept the motion to accept the two applicants. I'll make a motion to. Okay, uh, let me, let me go to the public first. Are there any public comments? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion to accept the two applicants. Second, okay, I have a second. All in favor? Uh, none opposed. Okay, both passes. Congratulations, Frederica. Paul is not here, but congratulations to him as well. Thank you for everything that you do. I mean, you do it. Out of service to the community and out of the, the goodness of your heart. And, and we really appreciate it.
Mayor, I have a question. So is there swearing in on that? Because I don't remember that that has been done before. Is there? I hope that's taken with that. And when will that be?
Thank you. Okay, next item is B, seventy, approve the audited financial statements for fiscal year ending. Third, June twenty twenty-two, and I'll turn that over to the city mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So these are the audited financials for last fiscal year, and I don't want to take. The wind out of the sails of our financial group, so I just passed it over and converted it. Right on. This will be. Mayor Donaldson represents the city council, uh, Robert Morello. Um, city representative, the audited financial statements, third, year in two thirty, twenty twenty-two. After that, we have this Paul Fan, who's the engagement partner and conducted the audit. We're gonna talk about the audits and then if there's questions, they want to have pretty much any questions and I would like to share a couple of them. Things on the screen for you that can see. Thank you. Now, so, uh, for inviting me out to share with you the results of the two thirty of twenty twenty-two audits. So I'm happy to, uh, share that we had a clean audit, so which basically mean that issued, uh, unmodified opinions. Uh, we issued a few of those. So, uh, when it comes to the, uh, financial statements, uh, that means that the financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects. Uh, when it comes to the internal controls of the financial reporting on compliance, uh, our audits, uh, did not identify the deficiencies in the internal controls that, uh. We consider to be material weaknesses. Uh, our test disclosed no instances of non-compliance or. Other matters, uh, that would require to be, uh, according to the government audit standards. Uh, so overall, uh, there were no, uh, significant incorrect adjustments, uh, no difficulties during, uh, audit or disagreement management, so overall. A smooth audit. Uh, I wanted to thank, uh, the city and their team for helping with, uh. I know they had the daily stipulations that have not earned any, somewhat disruptive and so we wanted to thank them for their assistance. Um, what I want to do next is kind of go over some of the, uh, key financial highlights from the year, just, uh, pointing out, uh, things. Uh, so we'll start with, uh, page seven of the audit report. And, uh, what you see there on the screen is, uh, the statement of net addition. And, uh, at the bottom there on the right side, you'll see that, uh, the city's, uh, net position went up, uh, just under one point four. Uh, million dollars and, uh. And the, the big reasons for that, you look right in the middle there, where it says noncurrent liability. So it went down. Uh, just under a million dollars. So basically it brought there. And then, uh, one other thing I want to highlight is the deferred flow resources, which is the, uh, a couple of rows below that. And so what's, what's happening there is in your noncurrent liability, because you got here, the city's pension plans. And the way the pension plans work, um, they fall two-year class. The actuaries will get all this information, they'll run their analysis, whatnot, and do some report. And, uh, whenever their contributions to the plan, so when employees, employers, uh, make contributions, those contributions get invested, so they're assets and. So if you remember back two years ago, uh, the market was really good, you know, there are high returns, um, and so. That's, that's the cause for the decrease in the pension liabilities. So the, on the flip side, when the actuaries, what they do when they do this, they have a lot of assumptions. So one of the assumptions they have is return on investment. And so when they're wrong and they, they were quite off, uh, that year, um, that difference gets amortized over five years. And so that's the deferred flow resource you can see with the six, seven, sixty-three decrease. So that's gonna account for a majority of that in. So the two numbers kind of offset each other. And, um, as you know, with market volatility and because history's already passed, all those gains from two years ago went away. And so what we expect to see this coming year will be a complete flip of that. The pension liability will go back, uh, to the deferred flows, the offset again, another. Five year reservation is in the opposite direction. So, um, it's a, a ganyon, basically. So this, what you get from that is just, that's what's positive, but it's a temporary one. Uh, one other thing I'd like to highlight, if we can go to the balance sheet on page thirteen. And so this isn't a significant change for you, but I wanted to highlight because there's a new accounting standard under Gatsby eighty-seven. And so what, uh, what you'll see on page seventeen. Actually, that one. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so, uh, at the top of this, in the assets, um, so what Gatsby eighty-seven is, it really defined the way you look at leasing. And, uh, the old rating used to be, you know, the operating leases, the capital leases, uh, Gatsby eighty-seven. The capital leases kind of remain the same, but changed terminology, found to be a kind of a purchase. The capital leases kind of remain the same and changed terminology, found to be kind of a purchase finance agreements. The operating leases go through a different kind of assessment, and so uh there's a whole. Uh decisions we basically go through to decide whether or not uh Gatsby is applicable. So what ended up happening is. A lot of the operating leases in the old way are now getting capitalized. And so the city has uh two material uh leases out there. They've got, yes, have the garden center and the carmel house, which has as a as a landlord. So yes, the less sore in this case. So what you see is you see the lease receivable, that's a new line item uh for the city. And then also. Uh down deferred info resources, you've got the deferred info resources there. So again, it's an accounting thing. It's uh it's having to recognize at least seven years over the liabilities and then you've got receivable as the assets. On the balance sheet there. So those are the key uh items for this year. Uh so overall, great job to the city.
If you have any questions from the council, I'll start with Councilmember.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you for looking here to meet us in the prior. Thank you for all. Uh I just have a question uh uh about any potential risk. Uh that may affect the financial position of the city for the next uh fiscal year. Because I uh right now you're showing us the facts this year. What should we be probably put attention? Right now?
Sure, yes. Yeah, you know, the uh uh the city actually is very good. Look at the uh the balance sheet, uh the ending fund balance is at, you know, it's just under twenty-two million dollars. So we're sort of in the bottom of better, best part of how the ads are managed from the short term, you know, the more immediate steps. So you have that sense of planning from now on, so to to uh you guys to operate the day-to-day uh day-to-day uh operations. Um and even on the statement that commission where you're aware on that, uh you know, you'll you'll see your long-term assets and long-term liabilities. There, you know, the city's got a healthy uh net position as well at uh just under twenty-one point five million dollars. Pretty good numbers.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Fair and clean audit, no discrepancies, good financial health. Thank you for your very informative presentation.
Yes, I wanted to remind everyone that this is a journey that we've been on for several years now. And so there's been a planned improvement of the class. The seeds that the council back then planted, we're re-keeping the harvest now, okay, or it really sound. That I'll pick up the public, any public comments regarding the audit? Seeing none, I'll bring it out to the council. Uh we'll have a motion to approve the audit and financial statements. Okay, is it a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. So uh all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, I'll move on to uh the next item in new business, seven C, receive a court uh report on the F Y twenty twenty-three twenty-four grand budget. City manager. Thank you, Mayor. Um so just wanna kind of stage for everybody. This is a draft, but it's. Hundred percent perfect. They, two weeks ago, when that was the budget committee, uh went over the groundwork over on the yard, but. Broad and Chief and Karen on future budget for next year and making tweaks. And like I said, it's been a journey, so. Continuing to make improvements and improve our policies and improve our budget system and how we're like. Making sure we're operating appropriately and so all of that takes work. And it's based on our wants. We're continuing improving this product. Uh so that we can put that better and more accurate information to the community. Um but this is still, which is the discussion base there. It gives this presentation. Um so Roberto will be going over some details of the operational budget and then. Figure things out. Once something is done. Now that we're in good financial stead and we have a good financial foundation, that's just part of it.
Hey, Allison, actually, council, you had one general back of staff report on this stuff, but I should do it right now. So take a little bit of time. I have a little bit of schedule on the big picture. But what you have in your packet is what you call the general fund summary. This is the general fund. This is the city's main operating fund, so. Most of the day-day activity takes place. But as we look at the twenty twenty-four, uh this way you're twenty-four budget. You'll see that it's a four point five billion, current budget is four point four. There's an increase of one hundred seventy-four thousand five fifty, which is a four percent increase in revenues. Uh if you look at the revenues, you know, the the largest number is of course the sales tax. Fortunately, that's a four point eight percent increase over the current year's revenue. Uh and we ran the budget, we had been concerned because everybody was talking earlier recession, recession. We were trying to plan for that. Fortunately, talking to the sales tax consultants that the city uses, they're not normally session is in view. But very modest increase. So basically, this budget is a status quo budget. Uh the other big number is the airport police services. And that's paid for, well, that's that is the revenue coming from the airport, the Bay Harbor Police Department. Those are the two big numbers in the budget. And at this point, we're looking at revenues to go up four percent for next fiscal year. Though that you have expenditures. Um currently, uh four point three point one, we're back to four point five. In this graph, there's still a little more keeping to be done. It's an increase of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, so it's a three point seven percent increase in expenditure. So. You're basically running neck and neck there. If you look at the increases on council. Same city manager, audit tourism, you see a thirty-three thousand dollar increase. Uh it's not really an increase in the audit. That's where we chose to put this here, the uh we put in thirty thousand dollars for rent buying. For the city can go after events. City doesn't have the stats. There's firms that specialize in doing that, and others using the moniker of this, so use them. So there's very soon to be advances. City can also use it in that regard. So there's thirty-three thousand, uh not that it's gonna be used, but we're budgeting and there will be the strategic discussions of what needs to. Go after for bands. So that's that increase and it's only because it is a brand new item this year. There's been discussions about getting gas, but they put money in there, they're gonna go after them. The other major increase, you notice this in the police department, at eighty-seven thousand is, is it should be, that is the biggest portion of the budget. Police department. And that's also a three point five percent increase. It uh this, it covers all the operating costs of the police departments. The other number that's uh that may be used as a public works, it's thirty-four thousand and fifty investments. That's what we moved the. Uh that's the thirty eighty-three organic program that the city has had. It was in the city clerks, but. Again, actually, it's actually not a city clerk, functions, we put in what the public works, but they're really good with everything else. Too. So you know, the difference is only three point seven, but then that's include in the current budget. There's an increase in salaries, a fine increase. Uh all other costs are basically satisfied, so there's not much there. Uh beyond that. And as we look at them, the uh the bottom line is at this point, there's a seventy thousand dollar. Basically, a surplus. If everything went like this, there are some high core numbers. As we've been having discussions, there's a couple more costs that we maybe add in here. But as you can tell, there isn't a big surplus. The surplus that has been built up is in the past this year. We're looking basically at status quo budget. Uh for this coming year, twenty twenty-four, we expect to finish up the year likewise, uh basically. In what I have to answer is a specific question you might have this in your attachment, there's also a lot more detail to provide you all the light items there. And we will be coming back to the finance committee as we define this a little bit more and take that the final proposed budget. With their consideration and then we'll come back to you. And then John will say. You want to ask about the budget?
Start with council member, who we.
Thank you, Roberto, uh for the uh for for the draft on the budget. Uh uh but just hearing uh from our residents who be public public even today. Uh is is there like a possibility that uh we can have some influence uh through. Uh about initiative that we can put in our budget or uh. Where we would address the growing concern of those uh traffic management or. Like road safety issues that we have here, because uh we we listened uh. Like earlier, they wanted some signs for those uh really radar. Speed, speed signs. That we can have, like even just in, because the way I would want to to do this would be. To have a unit, uh it could be a uh public city community who can propose some of these uh initiatives that would uh. Improve our traffic management here or our road safety. And if you can provide a budget uh for for that committee who would be working. With that, and that is not for them, it's for the infrastructure that we're gonna propose. And uh like. If you ask me, uh because I I talked about this, but but I want really like a group of uh of people with the help and support of our mayor. Uh to have that group of people who can really like identify and uh put some of those uh. Traffic planning measures or initiatives that would be great. And and maybe, you know, just a small amount of. With a town sum, if in one five town sum, if that's not so less, so much. You know, that would be great.
I think that's why we're having this discussion, that you have to go. I don't know, but it's prepared, but that's. So we talked about some of those items, sort of the the finance, um some expenditure that we want, but and I know that's. Yeah, the item within the. Consent would be well. Um so if you want to say anything, sure, I mean, it's really to the council, I mean, you all want to spend the money and that's. Part of it to do that. Um. You know, we can talk more about these kind of ideas and come back. Of course, if the finance meeting, um because it'll take a little bit of digging. Um now our 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 road funding and our public funding is is pretty kind of money to be. And road command is really small and do a little bit of that over over multiple years. So they don't do any real other projects for years and go and build a not unbalanced and we can do a small project. That's why we have to measure X minus rather than waiting and getting what we're advancing to the middle of our ten years. So that we can do a significant project that would actually. Have an impact on our roads and the quality of our roads immediately, so that we keep them standard that they're not going to the app for longer period of time. Um so so that that kind of money is very tight, but we do, we are in. Very well, yeah, we're often available, but um but uh really, the primary cost is going to be. Our financing engineers, I guess, that is laws and any hearing standard that govern the things I play. Size and. That's that is on a legal event within what I decide. Anything on two A, it's a really problem. Anything you want to do on our city or on the city, I do, but it needs to govern by in the next. But yes, very cool.
Okay, thank you so much, uh Mr. Roberto, for the very uh positive responses. Uh we have been heard a lot of our residents. Like about uh the the car seat and if we think out some uh traffic thing. In our city jurisdiction, that would be nice. If we could put uh some new, like we didn't just fifteen thousand. If it if it won't be uh be consumed, we can just go over for the next year. So but it depends on the group of people who who will lead like and identify those.
The the other thing I would add to what the city manager had to say is that he's done a very good job of integrating projects into existing projects. Good examples, um you know, we've got the the large Fortag project that's happening and there's an area on York Avenue at Sausido. Uh a drainage um gutter that's there that needs to be upgraded. And we integrated that into the camp's plan so that while they're working to 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 uh. Uh build that that trail, that also will be fixed. So it's 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 things like that that we are able to do as well and kind of get a common scale.
Thank you.
Okay. What's in the middle? Oh, but no, that's very true.
Yeah, I have some free questions. Um it just, I need some additional education, Roberto. On page one forty-nine on the packet. And you have, it says general fund available and it says unassigned economic uncertainties and appropriated. Uh Roberto, what's that? Yeah, sorry. So, yeah. Yes, exactly. Yeah, can you just tell us what what those are? And I'm familiar, obviously, with our checking in and our link, but I didn't know what it was for in relation to those.
Okay, so the fund balance is at two point eight, inverted one point three. One million six hundred and fifty-two thousand, whatever made you, has already been assigned. Few years ago. For an economic uncertainty, that's in case anything happens, there's money in the bank, it's a rainy day one. And especially uh for economic uncertainties, because we were talking about the recession, we had the pandemic. We had the great recession before we had the things. But this is because they have money, uh especially for those of you that. You know, late on the council for a while, there wasn't time and there was no. Make one, oh, period, there was nothing. Looking paycheck to paycheck, this is to make sure that that doesn't happen again. There's always something there.
So is this part of late? Like, is this other type of late?
Yes, it's a rest.
Okay, okay. And then the appropriated.
Okay, that's, so that's money that's clearly, the council has not yet appropriated for anything. So I think, John, we have some suggestions, sharing, discussion.
Okay.
Uh that that money hasn't, that's the other part, was saying to the council specifically with this.
Great, thank you. Uh yeah, I yeah, I have questions about capital fund project and and the balance, um fund balance, I'm sure we'll talk about that. Um I have a question for city manager, I know I mentioned a fancy strategic plan, I mean, uh budget line. You took down five thousand dollars. Are you? Are you sure that we can do strategic planning for five thousand dollars? Is that something that? Okay, well, I I I just want to make sure that we do strategic planning, so I'm gonna make sure that we, and the dots covered. Um let's see, I I was also wondering about, I'm very happy about the grant writer, so thank you for putting that in. And do you have a particular area that you're you're gonna want this grant writer to focus on this experience?
Uh not yet. Other city manager. Fans of you better run a location on. Just for look at providing this service and how much there's then. Certainly, while we're in a building production, we parent and public works.
Right, okay, good, thank you. Um. Um Roberto, can you go down to page one sixty four? Yes, this. My interpretation.
Yeah, I don't have the page numbers.
Oh, okay, I'm just looking at the. Yeah, so well, um I I assume we're we're talking about the art of fun um but I I was just like before I had a tax management fund. Um so I see that, you know, we spent thirty six time thirty. Uh but we're still in the exit of forty one six six seven, I'm just wondering like is that a? A report that Denise spends every year for this that we pay? Is that what that it's about?
No, the have ten management funds the. Obvious required to for the forward properties and air.
Okay, so we haven't seen that.
No, yeah.
Okay, that's. Okay.
We started by the county, we all have the county and given no urgent. Uh planning for all of the border properties and or obviously that's important and now it's.
So they have one that you know, what he wants to say, that's what's left on her.
I see, I see in that she hasn't built it.
Yes.
I got it, okay. Um. Yeah, I think that's it for me, other than the the later on. Thank you, Roberto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um at this time, I'll piggyback the public. If there are any questions on the public at the moment. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council, are there any final words, comment?
Um are we gonna have a discussion now about urban funds and? Capital funds.
Want to address uh Harvard and Apple. Yeah, yeah, listen to them.
Okay, so we don't want to have that especially.
Part of this. There any any further discussion on the project? Any further discussion? Okay, let's let's go ahead and talk about. So uh this real quick, we have the the major items that. Operating budget. And the business happening while we're saying. Okay, so. Gone through that and we're in a really good financial, it was incorrect. Really good decisions and work with their financial expertise to get us. Some of this. Community support, friendly ground resources like cannabis. Uh the 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 yeah, get us. Moving forward. Establishing things like that. Um and just to set up a decision with and utilize it and grow the. Uh agency unnecessarily the binary cost and trade that in one time. And pretty cool, but that in new reserves, that's great uh. Financial foundation. Whether. Matter of fact, you have your farming factor revenue streams very, very new. And depend on very few uh sources of right and. Sources and the perjury. In that by economic damage. Very out. The operations. Fortunately, the word. That's on the last week and right now the prediction is that we're not. They will say down, they will differently, it's the economy is not what we all were in a school instead of. So it's happening, that's our part, our understanding of it, um but because we're in a good situation, we we. For the first time really in this year in the city, we need to be talking about. Not to start any of the operations and not about services that we provide in a uh a plan and planning for the future and we heard. All from our audience, that's not something that's ever been done before in the past. And we're in a situation now where we have opportunities that we've never had before, uh because we have built up. Uh apparently siding the fund balance over the last several years. We Roberto mentioned this a little bit um. Reiterate, we. When when the community and the city council and city staff bought into partnering with cannabis and being the first. In the region to uh you know really kind of embrace that industry and do the first dispensary and that was very forward thinking, saving opportunity for that in the rain. In terms of revenues. Um so we started making plans for uh things. The staff brought forward and the council through the general fund fund balance policies. Uh anticipating putting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh in the funding or unfunded. Liabilities or for ongoing retirement costs um but. At the time, we're planning on many ring year of the funding on that. Uh liability thinking that our revenues for cannabis were going to continue at the pace that they're going and the peak for mining. Preventing doubts around nine hundred thousand dollars annually and cannabis. Uh nobody anticipated the canvas that the cannabis industry was gonna go the direction it's going. Almost completely dropped off. So uh fortunately, we have. Really strong sales staff, we had a really strong T O T and some of that has made a gap. But right now, we're pretty much down to cannabis revenue levels that were already put into our D and A operations. So any any of those big years where we had big fund balance and we put that wonderful one and plan is over. But fortunately, like first we built up significantly balance and fund balance over the previous year that we did not have here. So we have an opportunity to use that. So right now, Roberto mentioned we have about one point six five billion or economic uncertainty, one point six was the goal of the set by the council a few years ago. So we maintain that, that's great, so we'll keep that there. Uh obviously, the council dollars, does that change that anymore up or down, but right now, good, right there. Um so what we're here to talk about tonight is really what do we want to do with what is the not appropriate fund balance about one point one, one point two million. Uh estimated total for next year, uh and then the addition of remaining part of the fund which. Yeah, this is the work, artists, we still have to do some on the French unit, I know exactly what we're calling, but about one hundred and seventeen thousand. Uh leftover, it wasn't allocated in the project yet, uh and that's remaining from the almost four hundred thousand, not the ones that we got, right? So um so just to frame what some of the needs are, talk about ability to plan, so. There's there's significant infrastructure uh repair maintenance needs in the city that have gone. Undone for decades and so their liability to go along with that with also potential for. Uh catastrophic failure for some of our facilities. Um and and. Preparing something after its favorable exponential more expensive than maintaining or even preparing. Um so we we want to look at those things, so Ron and I have been taking a look, I've asked Ron to uh and share with me what keeps him up at night. What are they worried about, because what keeps me up at night is not like Ron is worrying. So this is not an exhaustive list, this is some of the items uh what we put together and. Um so. All of you, when you came in, you probably saw the orange K rail that we have out in the corner of the parking lot here, that's technically a parking space. I don't want anybody parked there anymore because uh that's always been a small area reason, always that difficult, you can't take that. Pavement, but with the rain and everything, so. It's just a thing on the roads, water and that, water really bad, or water gets in your ass and otherwise corrode. It it there is road rather quickness and part of the lot, so we had crabs with all the water and rain that we got this year. Um it started moving at a rate where we could all stand out there and watch it starting to slide in. Uh so. Can address that now, now we have money available, we're gonna wait. But I think it's probably that you take care of that. Um and so so Ron, I but started putting together a project and you can see right now we have a two hundred thousand dollar uh. Gas there right now, but that's. We want to give you an option for everything and then it'll be to scale it back, so so this would be take a pair of. The entire parking lot, we have the back part in line here, uh you know, we all probably they're well aware that they're not saying. It's right here in certain hits and so the hillside is coming down and retaining loss coming down uh. You know, uh ice plant in the oats are really downfolded, hillside up, but it was not long that'll last. Uh so it was want to improve the driveway down there and take care of some other things like getting rid of some of the uh grass, getting put in artificial turf in the front. Um and putting more drought resistant, less water intensive landscaping around city hall. Um you know, it takes a lot, so if we're gonna be doing that project around here, we want to do something. That is going to be forward looking for the future and also helps be a little more sustainable, but also get the biggest bank part of that, so if we're gonna be doing. A third of the parking lot is probably just a good idea to take care of the whole parking lot, we won't have to actually begin for fifteen years. It's also been an opportunity to talk about putting from charging stations, electric vehicles that we come back. People already carrying the gas. So they're opportunity to look at, so the two hundred thousand placeholder, maybe our grant writer will help us get some grant money for that. Uh we're also putting in for several of these projects, we're putting in grant applications for through the EBR uh for store response. Some of this has been a little up and. Um but right now, we do need to get moving on that, right now at least for a placeholder, we're discussing more uh we're putting. Essentially using what's left of the hard ones to use. Those types of things, say. You know, now we put in there, so if we want to. So Roberto gave a presentation that right now we're showing uh surplus in much by the distance of about seventy thousand dollars. Plus, um by the time we get this on, I don't then you don't want to have, don't want to have a depth theory, don't want to. How sort of want to budget that videos. You should be providing the mass from without the service that we can. That's the variable, that's that's money that should be on course providing these criticisms. Um so right now, Ron, I've been identifying. Certain city hall. And uh create some city hall prepares on uh the roof after the storm. Several things like that, so that in terms of that's not really. This pay budgeting that our regular operating budget, but increase Ron's budget, which will be a new thing for him because. Ron is really good getting this and getting this work, but very cheap and free, free pulling the most committed brother in the government on that. Hey, if you need a guy who knows a guy, tell your guy. Uh uh and then also there was a discussion a few council meetings ago about a trade and power here. Um and you go to ten or eight break. Logical problems. Oh, right. Something that I call the problems, yeah, uh it's just made you system that we have here in our other. Bandwidth on our internet very constrained, so as we move forward, more people are connecting to our. Council meetings and other public meetings via the internet, I'm just thinking that when. I shouldn't right now, so. I don't know what that looks like to fix. I can tell you what trying to handle something like that going forward currently, but. Trying to get our system under an obvious normality, so the first thing we would have to do is solve. So right now, ten thousand place for probably five thousand. Um so I'll move faster to this, but so so Mayor mentioned trying to get uh. A bigger bank for our market and trying to address um. Our small projects with bigger projects that are going up with some of the other agencies, so Rosita over. Wall repair um. Especially those of you who live on the side of the gravel, Rosita, we had a water main break. Three D spilling, uh three D ceiling. Um it's not a good thing, especially when you block your water for a day, uh but going forward, you're about working effectively, it's actually very good. Because we get to. Have. How I'm coming in to repair the damage that they're created to our infrastructure, this is better infrastructure out of it. So we'll be getting reconstruction with the road there with the new curb. Um but also we'll get, we're already planning on doing drainage improvements. Of that section, we're going to go down and forward and the creek and so we're working. Talent and their contract that drain drainage improvements above beyond what they would have done to preparing. By their water main breaks. So on the plan, it's been seventy thousand dollars worth and now they're pointing down. Good opportunity uh for all the rains and everything, this project with the wing wall repair. The weather, the storms pretty pretty well, but we had some undermining underneath that. And Rosita room, that's sitting there right now, that's a discussion for later, we're putting in the EBR on that one. Um but I'll talk more about what the potential impact that would be again on that as part of the bottom. Um but it is a project that we have to invest, bringing driving up the hill, you'll notice if you go up the hill, you see all the track moving out of it. So I'm on um basically the creek. It's going the hillside and over the years, this city has done what it can and so this forward gravel or gravel. Um this year's storms, you know, like that. And yeah, it's suffering, you know, a little bit of water getting corroded and it's starting to fail rapidly. Unfortunately, the water main break below it, so you don't get that except for two. So we're gonna have to just um I put in while we'll while our yield reduction here, we apply for a grant. Then we guarantee that everything that happens first second here. So promising. Um but if we don't get that correct, we're gonna have to think about doing something over here. Uh, how do we know? Or process on that. General one, that was the that is about 133,000. And then the others are just things like, said, we get very little like every year. We want a vendor X, gas tax. That's what we utilize for our road repair maintenance. So those three. Yes, you see in S V one, we fill balance and so. Again, just like what you wrote along here, a bit of variety above the park. Uh, the roll curve been pushed down here or drive up on the curve as they put it down. That lets water over the road, water. Lock it off. So I guess that put in real current scratching. So a lot of capital needs. This is by no means a massive list. There was a fair is also one of our bulkers this year. It's not sure. It's very easy possible. So there's only so much to be accomplished in years. Um, and like this year, this this year, we had a number of projects planned and then we weren't able to get to most of them because a lot of products were precedent and so on. It's and adaptive. So but capital needs and something that we consider, what we're considering, what do you utilize on that? Yeah, so. So some of the recommendations and some of the options that I'd love to consider, um. So like I said in the past, the policy governing general fund, fund balance has been any fund balance up to $150,000. Off the top goes to fund the section 115 trust, which is the fund future. So that's an unfunded liability that we're trying to get funded until we have a million dollars. And that's been a ten year plan, been your plan. Um, and then COVID did, so we missed a couple of years. We've been playing catch up last year. We put in 300,000 more. So I'm alright. Absolutely funding a little bit. You don't see those future fund balances coming back. So getting to that million dollars is going to be a little bit more of a challenge. But 600,000 is pretty close to being half 300,000 and now is like a simple thousand. Um, I want to create for the first time a capital improvement fund, uh, the capital improvement fund will be another opportunity to put fund balance into that. Uh, every other jurisdiction that worked at that have been part of the policy. It's one of the top priorities is on capital improvements. Um, that's a good way to allocate that money and assign it for a specific purpose, but also then allow it to build up and 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 track it. Um, another, another planning for the future that's never been uh, the fleet replacement and fleet replacement, they're very bottom car recently, you know, very sensitive. And it's not one of those things we plan on a one off basis and police are notoriously part of their vehicle. And they are, that's how they're trying to drive and they have to drag that way. Uh, and that's our job in their basic training, driving train. Um, so they're they're on the people, they don't last down their police vehicle. And if you stretch it out, there's about 100, 140,000 miles. That's really stretching the line straight to that. We have a partner in the airport and they show the boss for that, uh, which is great. Um, but we do have N G for replacement and because we bought all of our vehicles pretty closely together. They're going to come one after the other. So my recommendation is that we put some money aside to replace one of the vehicles this year. Uh, and that would cost us 50, 50 airport. Uh, but then also seeing that a fleet replacement fund and then every year we could have to put in some money into that every year. So that before five years when we have to replace the next one, we have one of them. We're playing important. It's not like to get. And then I already mentioned, our recommendation is what we currently have this fund, fund balance, the current like that. We wrapped it down split payments. And then the other thing that everybody knows about is hanging on our heads, defending. And that, 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 that previous comment. That's an option, something to consider. Um, there's there's a lot is complex. There's a lot that goes into that because the debt was structured in a way to be tied to that development and to be tied to the city and the building to get revenue from that development. And I hope we're minimal five years out of the shovel in the ground. Which means that we'll probably admit 10 years out, we'll probably start seeing any real revenue, we're hoping to remain in development. That's probably best case scenario. So we, we, we don't have fund balance right now to pay off that debt completely. And there is an issue with a portion of the debt with the current 5% interest. Problem is we have to pay off the non debt, the non interest bearing, according to the debt first before we pay off the interest bearing portion of debt. Uh, so which means that if we're going to bring down our liability on that, bringing down the approvals of the debt, we have to really pay off the impact of that. And uh, that exceeds our current fund now. So you could utilize our full fund now to pay that back, which will be four, five hundred thousand in install. And the opportunity costs to make it into the city like that because like I said, there's a lot of uh, really deferred maintenance and repair of our infrastructure and that there is a lot of liability. So yeah, and I said, that would pay it on that interest and you know, I thought years ago, I represent a lot in this percentage. And a house would love to have a percentage. It's uh, you know, the world has changed in the last couple of years. The reality that we're facing. So, but it is an option. We can start paying that down and it is something for a point that have to address eventually. But we don't have to, that we're in a good position. But it's, it's so that those are the biggest items that I want to put out there for you all to consider, for you all to consider. And then give us feedback and then we'll come back to about what the budget meant again a couple of weeks and then be back here again next month about what all of your recommendations are. Okay. Name the same. Please remember, we've got the impression of your comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Uh, uh, Mr. Burton, thank you for the presentation. And I told the previous slide, there was a bunch of money. Uh, I see on the back and uh, there is money that that we can like get uh, from the, from the big two uh, local sublocation grant. And for uh, for the folks, we are eligible to get in at the council for that. And then this can even be used for station and planning process uh, for, for the hospital. So maybe that could be uh, is that it would be big and consideration.
So it was something changed. My understanding that it cannot be for the creating the housing, providing the housing company that is all for implementation. I feel like you're
And so I was, I was feeling like those it's said in here, uh, uh, we, the whole of these sublocation programs is providing all to present companies to the opportunity for both to do the eligible projects while allowing for both implementation of the policies.
Okay, that's okay. Yeah. And I think that's really the ones there. Um, but I'll probably say yes, but yeah, I, I think sorry to delay the development of the housing element, but as part of the housing element, we have a fair deal with us. People take the bank or have to accomplish with the emergency services and
they might. That's called true, right? Big, absolutely good.
Yeah. So um, thanks for the report, John. Appreciate it. It was very similar to what we saw in the budget where Dr. Magic may be. One thing to realize is, is John, I know some of the other folks know public works projects are notoriously expensive. Um, there's a tremendous amount of committee, engineering and everything that has to go in before you're to shovel in the ground. So when you look at Rosita Road, 500,000, that's probably a scratch of the surface of that project. But to not do it, you know, it might be a $2 million project. I don't know the number yet right now, but to not do it and let that road fail would be a 10 million dollar budget. So we have to kind of pick and choose where we go and what we do. And I think the city's been doing a really good job of that. Um, I like the idea of funding the uh, the title. Yeah, the unfunded liability for the retirement. I think that's an excellent way to save the city some money in the long term. Um, but we need to look at these public works projects and get them knocked out before they come back and really, if that parking lot goes and we have, you know, everybody's talking about El Nino. And we just came out of El Nino, which is supposed to be the notorious drive for us. We have one of the wettest, third wettest winter on record in this area. Uh, El Ninos are notorious for high rain events in this area as well. It's kind of, it's kind of a mess. So we have a number of things out there that could really eat us up if we don't get busy and get it fixed. Uh, we get, get another storm like we had in March and that will parking lot could take off down. Yep. It could take part of city hall with it. Rosita Road goes, it's gonna, it's gonna, you know, if it slides off the yellow of that creek, the creek's gonna come out and who knows where it's gonna go. So we, I think we really need to look hard at these infrastructure projects and look at the ones that are going to save, you know, really put the city in a better position, even if it does hurt us a little bit. That's it. Thanks. Thanks, John.
That's your shirt.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Similar to what we saw in the finance, we need, so if you, um, Dr. Having this out for all of us to see. Um, and I, it's similar to, um, to Bill. I think these capital projects are really important focus on. So Ron, thank you for putting these out there and prioritizing. I think it's, it's good to get ahead of them. And similar to Bill, I'm also, um, supportive of the section 115 addition uh, that trusts unfunded liabilities. Um, I have a question. I, I am also in support of having a capital improvement fund and fleet replacement fund. I'm wondering um, what would be the policy or like, like, do we look at what our total is for capital needs and then we figure out what percentage to put in? What would be your calculation for how we would manage that funds?
Yeah. We have a percent. Right now. For those few years, while we built our first fund balance, we had fund balances, an expensive couple hundred thousand dollars. And and then we had unusual circumstances, like last year, we added a fund balance of $800,000. But that's because coming out of the pandemic, there were, the state allowed a lot of businesses to apply taxes because of the pandemic. So that was a true upward value. It came back to the investment tax. So we got an $800,000 basically. One time bomb in our sales tax that we weren't anticipating. Two, three years after it happens. So we get little things like that. Um, but going forward, I think we should all out, maybe it wasn't there for $500,000. So yeah, it's not going to be significant.
So I mean, the way that we plan the budget, we essentially want to go down to where we don't have much of a fund balance, right? So then, so are we taking these, the capital improvement fund and fleet replacement fund and making that part of our budget? So that we budget for that funds as opposed to funding that with vests.
Uh, not fun, but um, certainly the, the capital, capital improvement fund will will have a capital program where you can encompass multiple funds. So we don't, it'll will have projects in there that are vendor X fund, anybody projects, gas tax, and you know, and then capital improvement fund will be um, probably not funded operationally, it would be a fund balance. And so it would be whatever we can put in there, saving it slowly, slowly to go out. The fleet replacement of that one, I would rather you know, look down with creation. You see that fund, the money right now. Fundamentals and then going forward as we do.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's great. Um, yeah. Yeah. And then, you know, and you know, I look forward to discussions that we have. Um, in addition to these things and in terms of any kind of fight action, general plan, uh, the, you know, things that we need to do as well. Um, as the city, I, I, I'm looking forward to having those discussions and possibly being able to be some of these success in spur.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the project, the Rosita project. Very conservative, $500,000 has been the project. Um, you know, if that was something, so we're applying for EBR. Hopefully we're going to get that funded by, but if we don't, then the city's going to have to go and that right there tastes terrible. About half. If it's $500,000, it's half of our available fund balance already out there. Um, and then, you know, and there's another project that I can talk about that we also were thinking about, you know, South Downey Road and Intersection, the South Railroad, South, everywhere, South Underway. Improvements. We got mine before for that, but that was 2015, now that's in November, it's, you know, this is November, you know, 2023. So that conservative, it was just my guess, is probably a 34 or $500,000 if I'm getting funded. So, yeah, I think a lot of that. Hey, okay, council member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so no mention of the Safeway Saint Paul. You reported up, I don't call it that. So again, it's not for expense, that'll just make that bit. And so
Yeah, um. Yeah, I, I, I don't really have an answer. Okay, it's in flux. I don't even put this, but Ron and the city of modernism. Good.
Thank you. So as far as uh, fleet replacement, uh, which you asked, you uh, said one this year and follow up here. And then anticipating one to anyone that or his funds accrue and make allowable and commodity in our fleet combined with the city and in the twelve.
Yeah, well, and then you have to bronze. One of the bond law. That's that's songs. Here. That law or well past it, he was alive and lived a lot of the places, like a lot of bond or that everybody is having. But that's right. Yeah. So our, our this hour has been funded and not going down all of the planet. We have, have a plan for the place. But we have to get the chief.
So a lot of this is still in flux continues on, and so we're all but so I'm I can hear with my phone, also members that it's at 115. But so I'm getting her with my fellow council members that it's titled one fifteen bolstering the path. All of the projects are identified, saying when Messi is a logging street and finished in Fiji and then South. Looking at both figures also see, we'll also agree that soon first. Five hundred thousand may be a little low for Rosita, but best thoroughly mentioned. Here is supposed to be ends now while we gather for the next one season. And I think that would apply to both Rosita and the. Both side here. City hall. So I would agree with those. The list you gave us is not necessarily in order of priority. That can be established as.
Okay, with that, I wanted to go out to the public and see if you have any questions, comments regarding this budget. Any public comment? Please come up.
I just want to say after watching what's happening in Washington DC, we possibly get you to go to Washington DC.
I have a couple of questions. Is a five percent increase. Correct increase, you know, not too little or not too much. For. City employees, not saying we should have a pay increase. I'm just wondering if that's what's saying is the natural. Also, do you buy these vehicles only from one source? Or can we shop them? Or is it only one manufacturer that provides these here or something they say you can only have? Chemo's or whatever they've got. Is there a way that we can shop that? Maybe we just. Presumably plenty go for one. Oh, remember one, what's that? Have they died or something? I mean, have they gone away? And then are they still in the town? I mean, there have been storms on massive. He seems very tiny. And I wanted it to move away.
We have a public comment. Okay, CNN, I'll bring it back to the council. I'm in agreement with my fellow council members. I do see the need to. Allocate money towards the unfunded pension liabilities. I think that's prudent. And also the infrastructure funding that was laid out, I think is absolutely critical. And really, I think that will take up the majority of any surplus that we have. I mean, it'll continue. If it's important, we'll continue to build up the money that we have for capital projects. I think, you know, that's, that's going to continue to occur and also maybe build up the, the amount of money that we have for vehicle replacement. I think that that's also something that that we can do. Like I said, I think the majority of the money that we do have is going to go towards those unfunded pension liabilities and the infrastructure projects that would lay out in front of us. So that would be my guidance as well to staff. And with that, are there any other comments, city member, that you, any other discussion amongst the council members? Yes, I just think that as we move forward, I will offer some services to Ron, that John, I was fleet manager for M O W for about almost one year. But there are some very simple calculations we can do to figure out what the replacement cycle would be. And for, for one over there, we replaced all of our vehicles in the year we had it. But that included the trade in values and the wear and tear. And there are also some very simple calculations that you can do across the mile. You may have a brand new car that's costing you a fortune to run because it's had a lot of age. And you want to move it around and that's still the financial that you have. So that's only to your heart, but it's costing you more to keep it than it was in front of you. And the other thing with these cars you didn't mention, yeah, we do competitive bidding. But the other part of it is the upfitting of the police car. It's almost, it's almost the value of the car on top of it. By the time you had all the safety equipment, all the stuff that needs to be there for the officers to do their job. It's another huge chunk of money that is also done on a competitive bid process. You got. Thank you. There's no action required on that item. So I'll move on to the next item, which is seventy. Clarify direction for recreation and parks committee and other committee within the city. And a report was submitted by a council member Shirley and Louie. Would either one of you'd like to provide some background?
So first I just want to say that we need to start out by seeing how extremely fortunate we are to have city committees and groups to provide opportunities for residents to become involved in our city. And we really have a culture of volunteerism. It's not only lists our city, but also provides great opportunities for community connection, which really lists all of us. And as you may write in the staff report, our committees and groups have different origins. So for instance, the citizen faction group, which is a longstanding volunteer group, has been established in our city through council resolutions. Sustainable Delros is part of a larger network which falls under the guidance of the local nonprofit communities for sustainable modern accounting. Our committees within our city are different in that their origins stem from our municipal code and therefore fall into the Brown Act. Which means they have to have published attendance seventy-two hours in advance and only discuss the plan outcomes during committees. Unfortunately, some of our municipal codes are vague and don't provide the explicit direction one might expect from longstanding code. Case in point is the language regarding special committees, which is where most of our committees stem from. This language states that the mayor shall appoint special committees, which shall consist of a public safety committee made up of three members. Station and parks committee of three members, public works committee of three members and a financial committee of three members. Her as an office, she took it upon herself to create the recreation parks committee, appointing three residents from different geographic parts of the city. Along with the youth representative, council liaison and planning. Committee went on to give good work, writing guidance to the park in terms of updates. Launching a family movie night and participating in collaborating and citywide events. As we continue to do their work, we found it increasingly difficult to do their work with limited members since they had an inability to create subcommittee outside of their meetings. About breaking the ground act. In addition, they were told that their meetings would be less frequent going from monthly to quarterly. And as they were putting out requests for information, they found their request ignored and emails unanswered. Knowing that we have residents who abide and were appointed to this committee and who've worked really hard on the decisions, council member Louie and myself wanted to bring this topic of the parks and recreation committee back to the council so that we can discuss special committees in general. You know, really beginning with the recreation parks committee and hopefully provide their, their guidance where the municipal really is not. But the variation in structure as well as support, I think our, our city committees really deserve bylaws, which outline all aspects of their structure for membership, fleshing out their objectives or internal structure, eligibility for a budget and city, city support. In regards to the parks and recreation committee, I value what we're trying to, what they're trying to accomplish. Absolutely. We haven't fully realized what they might be able to do as a committee. I'm curious how they might come into play as foretelling bills and how we continue to discuss our open spaces or parts. So there wasn't an email that the, the city attorney would like to stand on. And there's a question about the special committee language and whether members refers to council members or any member. And whether that language of mayor shall, you know, appoint. And it, it, from what I read in the email, it says that the mayor should create these committees. And so when I, when I read that email, it felt that maybe the parks and rec committee should, should remain in existence since it is reflecting in our code. And so I'd be interested in seeing this committee expanded and given the support they need to accomplish the tasks they've been working on while we continue to verify.
Well, speaking of that, we'll send it over to council member Louie. So I just also want to add that the concerns raised by the recreation and parks committee are not basically pinpointing whose fault it is. It's nobody's fault. This is just, it shows that the meaning to address the lack thereof of security details in our municipal code so that everything will be clear and, and then everyone would be. So, so this really makes our business operation here more efficient and effective. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the, the part of the municipal code that we're talking about is section two point zero four and specifically paragraph one E. And our city attorney was able to take a look at that and provide some legal interpretation from that paragraph. I'll allow you to, to go ahead and share that. Thank you, Mayor. So the, the language of two dot oh four dot one eight zero is, is mandatory. Mayor shall appoint special committee which shall consist. It is the only section dealing with committees and regional boards and that type of stuff where it gets the mayor sort of unilateral authority. So other ones talk about mayor shall nominate, the council shall, you know, shall approve those, those nominations. As council member Shirley mentioned in the past, it's been interpreted by the previous mayor, the member of, a member of the public. I don't think that's a completely unreasonable interpretation as council member Louie says, the code assignment has to do many details here. But in other, in other sections of the municipal code, public is the purchase person as a member. Council members tend to refer to its members, but then again, in other areas, members of the council. So it's not incredibly clear. With respect to interpretation of this, it's likely that, that, that a quarter trial of fact would give deference to the mayor's interpretation of, of the language. But, but it is mandatory that the mayor shall. There is provision in municipal code that says, you know, shall is mandatory, must be mandatory, or may is, is permitted. So that my, those are my thoughts with respect to the, the construction of the statue. All right, thank you. Council member Bill, you have any comments, questions? Yes, I do. So one question I have right off, right out of the gate would be obviously we should probably take a look at the city code. Two point zero four dot one eighty and verify it. I think that would be a good place, one of the things we need to do so that we get out of this members versus persons versus whatever. And it just cleared up, the committee shall consist of three citizens or whatever, how we want to, but so that there's no more guesswork on the interpretation. They should, shall, may, I've dealt with those here, gotten in trouble already once up here. So the other thing is, I think that we need to support our committees. There's, I think there's one that we didn't fill, that hasn't gotten filled yet in the list of committees. So we probably should be taking a look at that as well. And I think we need to support the ones that we have. The pack does a wonderful job of what they do. The SDRO does a great job of what they do. I think Parks and Recs can do a great deal more for the city if they got the support they need. And I think it's a way of looking at it, you know, there's three, so it becomes a, a very tenuous Brown Act issue when they meet. So maybe we can expand that membership so that they can have these, they can have a subcommittee. It might make it a bit easier. I know it's a tax on, I know it's a tax on city revenues. To have these meetings to get them gendized and all those kinds of things, but they're part of doing businesses in the city. Every single town around this place has a Parks and Rec. Seaside has one that does fabulous stuff. The music in the park is all kinds of things that they do. Monterey has a very good committee that does it. PG does it. I think Yarre Oaks can certainly move forward a bit and support these things so that we can have some of these events. You know, where are we going to do music in the park every week? No, that's not going to happen. That's a reality that we have to build up. But I'd like to get started. I just saw an email that went out, the movie night that went, I don't know why that happened. My wife's the one last year, it was a lot of fun. A lot of people and supported it. So I think we need to move forward, get this going to be supported in all these committees, everything that's in here, not just Parks and Rec, but we need to get all of them. Clarify it. If we need to do bylaws, let's see them done and then move forward.
All right, thank you. Our city, did you have anything to add?
No.
Do you, Mr. Mayor, we have a lot of similar. Um, so. Getting down to. Any committee is. Structured. However, once in place, I think what's most important is defining, clarifying, as probably to give the the role that any committee face and the responsibilities that any committee plays in. So I've done quite a bit of research as I have the, the basis on two, city council base to the Parks and Recreation Committee in Seattle. And I've been doing so, I've reviewed many models affecting parks recreation committees across the nation, particularly within California. Most people considering similarities in lifestyles and market with aquatic microbiomes. Seasonal exposure and use spectrum. Common thread, a basis, a basis that I found which is definitely productive on parks and recreation. In the summer, as very well here, this is very typical. This is from AC and California. Most descriptions of the Parks and Recreation Committee are very consistent. And it reads as follows, that the duties of the commission, in this case, committee, are to promote, aid and encourage public recreation, including the developments from recreational and park facilities. The committee shall act in advisory capacity to the board of supervisors and the state's city staff and city council. City staff and council. In the planning, maintenance, developments and operation of recreation areas and facilities owned and controlled by the city. Shall study and make recommendations for board supervisors. Enter city council on the acquisition of development of recreation areas, facilities, studies by grounds, parks. Each is does not apply rules we can bring apparently for campsites. Prevents another, another recreational facility. So that kind of summarizes the. Not the description. As I understand it, most of the cities in California. Right, is those. And so. I think that's all.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. So to look at this with a fresh eye. You know, this opportunity for us to fix, like, if ever that we need to bring bylaws for. Opportunity for us to fix, like, if ever that we need to bring biologs or need to revise our code. We have to really put some in considerations. Before even establishing a committee. So like for example. Of course, as council member mentioned, like the focus that you're checking, this is really very important. We have to clearly define the mission of the committee. And we can even determine areas as well that they can handle or tackle or address. And another thing that we have to put into consideration would be the authority and the support. We have to determine the committee's authority, like clarify whether the committee is. Absolutely, or a division, this determination committee, or a implementation focus committee. And again, for sure, we have to talk about the membership and would it be gonna be. Composed of. Many residents or could be like, will there be. A representative from the council? So those things could be um, or discussed. And then, yeah, every committee may have a different membership, because it doesn't have to be. All of the committee would have the same members or the same composition. Because if you look at the really like the purpose of innovation, and if if it really like requires to have a lot of residents to be in that really one. So, and another thing that we have to. Really like look after the the commitment, because with these committees, we are relying on volunteers. And of course, this is really like a very good. Kind of like perspective for them when, or just putting the expectation in there. Like, what's even a commitment for this? If they're gonna have to be having meetings every month, and then or if they're gonna have their own meeting, so we have to. Kind of like a state notes. And as well, other resources and the support that that committee will need. For example, we have to identify the. Resources necessary for the committee's work, whether it's gonna be budgeted or allocated a budget for every year. So the group are important, a committee or a group cannot really like function without any resources. And and one thing would be also the accountability and the reporting. So we have to determine how the committee will be accountable to the city and its residents. Because we have to establish reporting mechanisms as well. Were they gonna be reporting to the city manager? Or were they gonna be directly reporting to the city council? So these are the things that we have to lay out. And. And one thing would be also for the generation and the new, you know, so. If this committee, I guess, from our code, we have to have this committee because it's a mandatory thing. So we have to think of whether. Whether there's gonna be a point in time that there's gonna be a resolution on a committee or how's gonna be the membership? Like, will it be gonna be two years or, you know, three years? So it has to be laid out as well. And and another thing that I have to think of would be. The thing I built and completely of this community is like, we have to plan for. The system of the committee's work beyond this initial formation. So like after year two, would it be having the same mission? Or can they be re-diligated, like the city council can re-diligiate some events or. Or other things that that they may, that they may acquire or handle. And of course, we we should also not forget the legal considerations. Things that we have to ensure that we're on board with all capable laws when we form these committees. And and we have to really have the help to that with our. See the phone, uh, for me, dot com, and you can really be there now. How we are in private patients with all of the in regards to our municipal code and that's really like. For us to to move it forward. So I guess those are the things that that we have to complete. Think and put into consideration so that in the long run or in the future. City council will have the kind of problem that we are, that we that we are into right now. So we need to really fix it before all so that in the future. City council, they'll have a better way of. Of supporting and also providing good service for our residents and their relatives. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to take it out to the public. If you have any public comment regarding regarding this item, please feel free to come on.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Eric. My name is Michael O'Brien. I live on Work Avenue. Thank you, uh, fellow residents. What I'd like to do is to share some ideas I have. You know, I I grew up in Derry Oaks. I lived in and out of Derry Oaks for forty years. And I grew up in the sixties. And in the sixties, we had programs down the park. I lived down the park. Every act school, I was in the park with a bunch of other kids. And during the summertime, we had programs here. And we had, you know, people with, they had crafts there. They had people helping out playing kickball. They had tetherball, which is not Derry, but for that, never many years ago. And that was on the summer program. I remember it was two hours a day or what? It was a lot of fun for the kids. Now, people know how many kids are left in Derry Oaks. And during the summertime, they get involved in all these programs at the city, Seaside, Parkland, Parlay. You name it, they're in all these programs, they're week programs. And they cost a lot of money. Well, I'd like to see, share an idea is whatever you guys decide, and it's all up to you guys. You know, this, that, it. I would love to see something like that, would be a week program, two week program, something in the summer for kids. Now, I would donate my time. What I'd like to do is, I, twenty five years ago, heavily involved in chess for kids. That's how kids had to play chess. I taught at five different schools. I had chess teams. We went to regionals, nationals, pretty good time. And I'd like to maybe do something with that. Some kids are beginning in chess, maybe learn a bit about chess, you know, not too many. I don't want to get into a club anymore. Twenty or thirty what I had before, but something I can introduction. And for the kids of Derry Oaks. Also, too, what I'd like to do is, I've been a photographer for fifty years. I know photography, I know cameras. I don't know anything about cameras, developing film. Shooting film, doing the largesse, the whole bit. I'd like to do a seven hour kids. In other words, kids get up and they're on, turn on the tablet, they turn on their phone. They go out and take a picture of the phone. They have no idea how photography started. They don't know anything about a desktop or anything about it. I can be able to kind of show them the history of it. You know, go back to the late seventeen hundreds. True, this is where the first recorded image looks. Short. Talk about ants loud, they've heard it. But they have no idea what camera used. I can show them as I can. I can show them thirty five millimeter tallies can attest, it's like, I worked for many, many years in chemistry. But anyways, I can show them what the cameras like. Folk film, unit sheet film, and I want them to get an idea. It's just not only an iPhone and some data picture that started many years ago. I think there's some. That's pretty much what I will say. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Donaldson, Councilmembers, neighbors. First, I want to thank you all for having the time to talk about the future of the place. My name is Michael, I was in Derry Oaks for four years. And I'm proud of Derry Oaks. So I volunteered to be part of the Parks and Recreation Committee. When it was initiated over a year and a half ago, to support the city's vision to improve our parks and natural spaces. Host more outdoor events and foster healthy and natural community. When the community was first formed, we sent out a survey to residents to get a sense of the top priorities for us to address. We received ninety two responses. And our work has focused on what we heard from those residents. The past year or so, we've been frustrated due to lack of city support for emails. Received no response, our requests seem to be ignored. We're trying to get clearance to use old city hall to host classes. And our emails get no response. We are trying to use our city approved budget of a thousand dollars to purchase things like an appropriate activity that would have. Supported the movie night this Friday. Or even thirty dollar paint pens for the rocks, for the kids to paint on rocks or an earth day. Those emails get no responses and no communication from the city. So we've just noticed a complete seeming change in the city's appetite for supporting committees like ours. And it's confusing, because civic engagement like that should be fun. We're organizing, you know, movie nights and photography classes potentially and. And inviting up parking improvements. And it seemed to me that there should be some enthusiasm across the board to support programs like these in any city. I joined the committee because I was excited to support and connect with the place that I live. And now I'm increasingly pessimistic about our city's willingness to properly support and resource. These committees. If the city's priorities have changed and the council would like to have Parks and Rec Committee merge with another group of sustainable Derry Oaks. I'm fighting that transition. I'm hoping that conversation, there will be no hurt feelings on my part. But if the city's priorities still include Parks and Rec Committee, I think there's a few things we need to be successful. We need at least five committee members so that we can meet in subcommittees and plan activities without permitting the ground out. We need access to old city hall, or at least a yes or no on that request so we can start planning classes. We need to be able to spend a budget even without a request being ignored. And most importantly, we need to feel like the city actually wants to be involved with and supports this work rather than acting as a stick to our efforts. I am still hopeful that the city council will decide to support committees like ours. We can identify issues together and work to clarify the responsibilities of the committees and workforce solution. I think Derry residents deserve, have some say in our city manages and spaces. We deserve fun events for our families and more opportunity to connect with our neighbors. And I'm here to help.
Well, Mayor, Council, here to be pointed out, this story is telling us. It's got to be on some Fox to shoot this, and that's what's happening. I'm still a movie. When did your, twenty years? So, like, Derry Oaks Center, that incident movie. But I've been long enough to remember when, you know, there wasn't that many opportunities for people to get involved. And this is what it was. And that all sort of changed a few years ago. We started in. A lot changed all at once. We turned in a whole lot, you know, a lot of bootstrapping going on, trying to get different things all at once. It might be at its rear four or five, we add a screen, trying to get a lot going. There's some wrong things, right? Okay, and that's that's to be expected. I mean, just say this something that you, I mean, where you can, make this work. Help these folks figure out what's not working, let's fix it. You've got people out here who want to get involved. I mean. Let's get involved and let's give them ownership in the city, how things are run, right? I mean, you know, I care, wants to run the piece, that's great. I had no idea you could do all that, right? I guess. So let's, let's get people, but we gotta make it work. We gotta support. We can't let them just hang out there, right? And I know it's work and there's a certain positive involved is, you know. Councilmember, you know, right, so I'm saying, it's just a hot doing business. I mean. You're, you know, you want to see, you're proud of people, obviously, want to be proud, they want you to. We should figure out a way to make it, make it. Give them the support they need, but you know, that's, that's an essential habit. You don't need to die in the vine or. You know, I'm gonna say it's part of CAD. We recently have. You know, done some events with different groups. I think it's really working out great. I mean, we've had some really nice stuff down the park. So there's a lot of synergy that you can get if we get to tell that you're showing us, I guess, what's up, like, one group does everything. And but if you've got these different groups, focused in different areas, and then they get together, engagement and do something. That's the most recent one down the park, it was blacks, it was white, and it was a nice turnout, you pay. So anyway, let's make this work, perform what this is, let's don't let it die, let's figure out what they need, let's repeat it up. Thanks, thank you.
Jim, what do you have, right? Okay, so I guess I'm a little lost in some of this because. A, the the cities that were mentioned by councilmember Rexel Cronin. Have a population of thirty five thousand people. We have one thousand six hundred people. Those cities are twenty two times larger than our city. And I think from what I'm understanding of the conversations here, that this Parks and Recreation. Recreation Committee is saying, we need city staff, we need city money to do what we need to do. And again, I go back to, obviously, the example of Seaside and what they do. They've got a gazillion more businesses and a gazillion more tax dollars. And I I looked real quickly online, but I couldn't find it. I bet you they have a paid staff position. For their parks and recreation, if not several. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, Old Meyer Center. Is part of their parks and recreation. And I know there's paid people that sit there all day to plan and do these things. So I. At least from sitting here, I'm not getting the impression that it's a matter of not wanting to. It's a matter of, it's not that big, we don't have the resources. I mean, watching this budget stuff. There's no room in there to add a part-time person to do parks and recreation, communicate with the city. Parks and Recreation. And again, listening to what councilmember Hallen had to say about. The definition of what a Parks and Recreation Committee is supposed to do. Again, it seems like you can either go the route that Roque has gone, which is fully self-sufficient. With a few exceptions of needing some printing done, or you can be sufficient on the city making it happen. And I'm sorry, but there's not a time I walk in the door that Karen and Lee over there are going. So honey, what are you doing this weekend? You gonna go get your nails, go and get your hair just. They're working. Ron, who's, I don't know if you've ever seen him, just sitting on the street corner, just reading the novel, passing time. He's working. So I don't know where the people that are asking for city resources think those resources are going to come from. Oh, the email problem. Now, again, I don't know the timing on this, but I know that there's a significant technical email problem here at the city. I'm guessing that may be part of the experience they were having, because I know everyone that's on staff here and they answer emails whenever they can. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And it was my understanding when they even started, it was going to be an advisory. And that, that's, that's, that was my understanding. And then everyone got together and had all of this. They wanted everything fantastic and so much energy. And Karen is a friggin' workhorse. You know, amazing everything we've done. And I just, and Joe Kay is the organization that's usually got things and they have the funds and whatnot. And I know there's some personality issues between people. But I think. And there's so much more freedom if you're not tied to the city and if you can work with established organizations there. There's, I don't know if you guys heard July fourth, somebody said, I want to have music in the park. So they're having music in the park. And it's just so anybody, any idea can happen. And it's just working, working with the folks. And I know volunteering, I've just had your head there for a while, I've been saying fifteen years, but. I'm ten years working on it and. Any, I know the biggest problem we have was something, still I have this very idea, maybe they have someone moving forward. Which is a problem. You want to spearhead something, and then, you know, you're always looking for people to just kind of spearhead it. And then you can find, there's all sorts around. And then you are. Anyway, that's some of the.
Thank you.
Good time to someone to come up twice. If you may. So I'm thinking about, you know, I was talking about EVX that you could have in the future. You know, if you have things like volleyball or badminton or even kickball, a kickball doesn't cost that much. I'll buy a kickball, I'll volunteer, I'll get my granddaughter to help. You'd have volunteers. I'm sure there's a lot of people who have daughters and sons that are teenagers or like to come down and have fun for a week or two here or something. I mean, I think that's awesome. Now, my only question is, is the kids, is the kids out there that really want to participate? That's it.
Thank you. Any other public comments? And see, I'll bring it back to the council, any final discussion?
So just to make that little comments, um. I refer to the city of Monterey, the city of Seaside, the city of Pacific Grove. Never did I. Even imagine that we would try to put on anything of the scale that those larger communities that have money. Um, my concern is really simple. We funded a thousand dollars for the Parks and Rec Committee to do something with, and they've been unable to do it. I think it's a matter of protocol procedure. If we don't want to have these committees, then as a council, we need to get together and figure it out. And remove the language from the city code. Jeremy brought up the Recreation Park Committee accident advisory. That's in our code, the one that you read off that. Um, aiding and encouraging public regulation, including maintenance, development, operations of rare level. It's in the code. We have it there. It's something that we shall do. So we need to do it, or we need to stop doing it and let these folks go out and. Partner up with CAG or partner up with SDRO or whoever they want to go partner up with. Or go on through the sunset, uh, discourages. And I, I'm trying to avoid that discouraging. So as a city, as a council, we need to get together and figure out how we're either going to support this or not. You know, we're not going to support it, which is fine. That's up to the, to the council. Pull the language out so that you, as a mayor or the next mayor that comes down the line, who's trying to follow the rules. And goes, I'm supposed to appoint all these committees, and then we appoint them to those plan. I think it's real simple. We're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it and, and we won't. Cause you've got the CAG, they do great work. They're, as, as Mr. Clark put out, they're standalone organization. They, they fund themselves. They take care of business and they've been phenomenally, in my opinion. Um, successful over the years. The earth day thing was just over. I loved it. It was happy. So again, but then we're leaving. If I just want to clarify where we're going to go with the committees and either set them free to do some stuff. Or say, have them pay time and set them free to go out and, and use their, their energy for good somewhere. Thank you.
Hey, any further discussion?
Just one more, I can scare and I agree, I agree with all the talking about this. This is Bill. I need a little bit more, um, so I don't feel like it turned on. I think that's funny, that he's not. One words, man. Um, considering with what we've heard from our parents. Well, you know, I'm sure a lot of the American. I'd just like to finish by saying that, um. You know, we have a beautiful park. And I would encourage any and all to utilize Delray Parks for fun, creative, educational, amusing and recreational venue. Any individual or group, public or private, already has an invitation and access to our park by way of the process already in place. We have an application and reservation system already in place in the city clerk's office at city hall. It has worked effectively for many years. It involves now agency. An application, a fee schedule, list of rules and regulations and very important gave indemnification, excuse me, indemnification clause. Uh, we're leaving the city certain liabilities. Some of these issues, some of these events, uh, some may say these events, uh, we like to host. They're for the entire community, young and elderly alike. All are welcome. These are events that strengthen the community and bring us all together on occasion that we virtually celebrate and enjoy the quality of life we share here in Delray. This should be in North and sponsored somehow by the city of Horace. This is true, I, I feel. In fact, we already have a group in place that as well. Group comprised of many. Objective volunteer members in the community that meet every month in Old Town Hall. Delray Oaks Civic Action Group has been organizing a calendar of annual events for decades. Directly benefited the entire community, which there's constantly been a strong and happy attendance. Again, any individual or group, public or private, is certainly welcome to join Joe. Joining these already established, you know, facilities. So yeah, just to kind of echo some of the comments. Further, brief, um, conversation.
Thank you. We got the further discussion.
Yeah. Um, I asked the city attorney, so, um, so we have an established Parks and Rec Committee. Um, the labor says that we, we must have a Parks and Rec Committee. Can we make changes to that? It says the mayor, so is the mayor directly? Uh, I guess I want to clarify, do we as a council have the ability to change the makeup of the Parks and Rec Committee? Or is that, is that on the shoulder of the mayor?
That's currently written, it's on the shoulder of the mayor.
Bye.
I just want to make sure I heard from you all and also the public. Um, any other further discussions on the diet? Okay.
Well, thank you for being here. Thank you for your comments, both public and uh my fellow council members. The situation that we have here is I'm being directed by our municipal code to do something. And there involves a legal interpretation of what that means. What we've determined is the mayor shall, so the mayor has to form four committees. There was also a question on, um. What members mean. In other words, there are three members for each committee. What does that mean? Are they members of the public? Are they members of the council? The interpretation from. Our city attorney is that it is more likely that member means a member of the council. Now, let me go back. I'm being told within the municipal code that I must do this. And that's absolutely what I need to do. I need to comply with the municipal code. And I want to do it in a way where we maintain the momentum and the goodness that I'm hearing from everybody. I mean, absolutely, the amount of involvement from the city is just incredible. I mean, you've heard uh examples of the events that we've all attended. And that's something that I don't want to lose hold of as we go forward and comply with what the municipal code is telling me to do. So I need to form four committees. Some of them are already there. Um, and I need to do that with members. Now, like I said, members, according to the city attorney. More likely means members of the council. So I looked at what other things would lend to that interpretation. Within this municipal code. This paragraph, this specific paragraph about special committees falls under the section. That deals with city council. So more likely than not, they're talking about city council members and what they need to do. I also looked at members of committee, members of committees in governing bodies, whether it be at the federal level or down to the local level. Members of committees are usually members of that governing body. Um, if we see it on our boards that we, we are all a part of, there are committees underneath, let's say, the Monterey One Water Court. The members of those committees are members of the board. There are cases, though, where they are not. It, it's, it's somewhat rare, but that, that can happen. Um, so that kind of lends towards the members of the governing body should be the members of the committee. Now, having said that, the public is still involved with the process. I'll use the finance committee. It's not as exciting and I didn't have that committee talking about the finance committee. But that is the one example where it's been set up in accordance with what municipal code is telling us to do. And it works quite effectively. I, I'm on that committee with Councilmember Shirley and Councilmember Ragsdale Cronin. And what we do is we advise and provide recommendations to the city manager so he can provide that to the staff. And the product that you get is what we saw play out today. It, like I said, it's not the most exciting thing in the world, but he was able to pull that together. And present it to you all based on recommendations and advice from that finance committee. And along with all the expertise that he had. But that's kind of how that committee works. And I think when this code was put in place, that's what they envisioned as well. So the bottom line is. To get into compliance. We will have a public safety committee, a recreation and parks committee, public works. And finance committee that will consist of three members. Based on the advice of the city attorney, that will be three members of the council. Okay, so what I need to do is follow this. Process exactly like I have with board appointments that we do for the various quarters within the region. I will reach out to all the council members, get their preferences on which committees they would like to be a part of, and I will propose. Um, a, a slate that we as the council will approve, just like we always have. Now, to address some of the things that some of the council members talked about and the public in terms of frequency. Of, you know, how often does that, does that committee meet? What is it comprised of, the duration, the scope, you know, we're talking, we had some great uh, uh, feedback about programs. And things that have been happening within, um, well, Parks and Rec Committee specifically. So that would be something that once that committee's formed can further define. What that, what those, the, the scope of their mission is, what, you know, things that they want to focus in on. And if the composition of the, uh, the committee needs to be something different. Because ultimately, what should be happening here that can address some of the concerns that you have is the committee meets. They provide advice and recommendation to the city manager where he can come back, just like we saw today. And present it to the council and we can approve it. And, and that's could be the approval of resources, whether it's money, whether it's equipment, doesn't matter what. They'll bring that to the council so we can either approve it or not. And also incorporate any of the other, uh, agencies that we have or organizations like. Like, uh, Sustainable and, and the Citizens Action Group. So that's how the process I envision it working. So to come, to, to get in compliance with this regulation, that is the way forward for me. This is completely on me. It, it's, at, at this point, I'm derelict in my duty to make sure that we are in compliance and I will take care of that. Using the process that I just described, where I'll reach out to the council members and, and provide that slate for a subsequent. A council meeting approval. And then from that point, the committee can decide, um, some of those other, other things that they need to. Because ultimately, ultimately, I want to make sure that we continue with all those good things that everybody's been talking about. So that's the way forward for me. Um, and since there's no. Motion that needs to be made, it's, you know, the, the, the item is, is clarification and direction. And ultimately, the, the action falls completely on me and, and that's the action I, I plan to take. All right? So with that, I will move on to the next, um, item, which are council reports, city manager report. Yeah, um, council reports are in the packet. We've also got some correspondence items. Uh, we got a, a letter from the Public Utility Commission. MST and Tamsy Highlights, uh, Veterans Advisory Committee. Uh, a letter from a resident and, uh, police, uh, department of knowledge.
I just had a couple of things that I want to cover there. Ross, I hear, but. I've been doing a great work, fortunately, behaving and done, uh, I've been calling Stokerine for the coming to do energy audits. And.
June, mid-June.
Right, so they're gonna help us, I think, for any efficiency in our life. Already done with solar panels, but they're gonna have enough to help us. Uh, both opportunities and. Vision. Um, also, I will have a lot of, uh, we're definitely, right? Um, there's, there's a lot of work this year that needs to be done, uh, in terms of the vegetation clearing and. Understandably, they are. Free tax and they're scheduling this year. Okay. For, for, for cheap water. See that fire. Or, or, or. And yes. So we need that. Um, and also, I don't know, I don't know, probably be everybody here. Certainly, I like this. The one of our lives, unfortunately, the good keeper, she was sent out. I don't know the dog down there. I know she. Down there, she, she raised, I come back and visit, just kind of make sure that. Uh, uh, just so you guys all know, she's not with us anymore. Also, do have a reserve officer. You know, the view that I'm definitely enjoying, this kind of Kevin is now one of our reserve officers. And what's fun for me is just work from the sheriff's office, so. All circle. So I had to put that.
Thank you.
My next item is a closed session item. At this point, is there any public comment regarding the closed session item? It seems nothing from the public. So at this point, we will adjourn to our closed second item. That involves, uh, litigation council, uh, pending, pending litigation pursuant to.
If you respond, I'm very listen.
Okay, good.
Okay, well, meeting being from closed second, city attorney, please, so that we know. Thank you, Mayor, with respect to the one item on slow session, uh, the council, United Claim of Misconduct. Right, thank you. So our next meeting is Tuesday, June fourth seventh at six P M. And with that, your adjournment.